Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, October 8th Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. May I please have a motion to call the meeting to order? So moved Carol, second Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
And may I please have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person? So moved Linda, second. Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we shall be back. Welcome, everybody. May I please have a motion to move out of executive session and back into public session? So moved second, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight? So moved Linda, second. Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome to our liaisons tonight.
Yeah, we only have one from Schrader.
Oh, Schrader. You want to rock, paper, scissors for it?
Oh, okay. Joni has to leave.
Oh, she does, oh, I'm sorry. It's kind of fun, though.
She's good. Okay, yep, good, and Joni won. Come on up. Yeah, that sounds great.
Sure.
Hello, how are you all doing? Great. All right, we'll give them just a little more time. I'm Joan Bardana, so I'm the WTA liaison, for people who don't know that. I hope I still am after three.
Look at that. Wow.
All right, that will be our closing, but that's important to have on stream. All right, I was thanking the liaisons for their report, thank you for playing. And I'm sure they will be here. That change to five is pretty awesome, but I, that might have, they might not have seen it yet. They should. Okay, first and foremost, we are six weeks into school. And with that, I love the first meeting where all the little ones come from their fifth grade going six. But it's also so important in those first weeks. We have over eight hundred and fifty members of our WTA. And you all know it consists much more of our educators and our TOSs and our mental health workers and all those people providing all the supports for our students. So we can create genuine, authentic learning. But we also know those first five weeks, we need those drills, we need to practice those things. And we promise, as always, as a WTA, to keep our children safe, to be, practice those drills with sincerity and age appropriateness, so they can understand and know that we care for them and their safety is always going to be our priority. Because the plans that are created are incredible and we know we are the faces in front of them when we need to practice our drills. So that promise we take very, very seriously. On a nicer note that we get what's fun, our elementary schools are all doing their fun runs and I think everybody sent me pictures from the elementary schools, the WTA. They know that's partnered with the PTSA and that is such an incredible and great opportunity to have in with all those pieces, especially when it's the first five weeks of school. Across the district in our elementary schools, we also had some schools participating in Nursery Rhyme Olympics. I, they were at, they looked like they had so much fun and they took off between the summer Olympics and it was a great segue into celebrating the nursery rhymes and fables. Our middle schools, the clubs, the advisors, the WTA members who have stepped forward to create more and more clubs. Pokeman, I heard, is at Spri, as well as Environmental Science and Dungeons and Dragons, not just at the high schools, but they are now at the elementary schools as well. As well as our pantries. When we think of pantries, we usually say our food pantries at the secondary levels, but they have expanded into being so much more. And we know as a district that Maslow's hierarchy, our kids need to make sure they're fed and clothed, and people have come up with some really inspiring ways to make sure far more than food and essentials, more than food is in there, that there is shampoos and conditioners and toothpaste and toothbrush. And the amazing things that get put in there, and we explain to kids, sometimes take those so mom and dad could spend the other money on the things that need to at Wegmans and that doesn't take up some of the expenses of any of the grocery stores in the area. So it's pretty cool that it has expanded to those levels. Onto the high schools. Those letters of recommendations are coming in by the hundreds. And even though literally there are some staff members and WTA members who have literally written hundreds, they take care of each and every one of those children who come to them, young adults, I should say. And they work with them as care as though they are the only letter they are writing, even though they have probably sixty to seventy sitting on the side. It is amazing. Our libraries, we have shared with you guys, have transformed over the years. Our college fair was also in the halls, it is now in the libraries as well. And the college reps are sending more and more people to discuss and have those open conversations with our students about what's there. And it's okay if you don't go the first year back either, we accept kids later on and it's not for everyone. And there are other alternatives as well. So that open-mindedness, that inclusivity is absolutely present from our WTA members. Our model UN has taken on a new chapter over at one of the high schools, where it just started actually right before COVID. It is now competing strong and it had over forty participants wanting to debate at its very first debate. A club that started with much less than forty is already up to forty with kids and I believe sixty students joined the classroom because of the, the way that the advisors are spreading. Owl has not doubled in size with, with space, but it has almost doubled in size with our students and participation. We had one student come back with just being accountable for finishing things up before the name went on the diploma. And there was just a mini graduation there for her and her mom and the other students seeing and the other students being just as gracious. There were also pieces that we have advisors working with homecoming with both schools and making sure that everyone, Goal, Owl, Schrader, Thomas, Titans, Willink, Spri, everyone is included and has a part to play. And the seniors are definitely showing the freshmen that that is what we need to do. There's also a new club called Excited Ed Club. Educators at the high schools who are helping out with the universal pre-K. It's getting stronger and stronger and now they have created a club for those students to help start fostering some of those skills and moving towards them. Our WTA, we have our rep training, our women's committee has October seventeenth, there's some financial training downtown, very active on the local level. Our WTA cares, we have been part of many walks and many, many things that are going on in the month of October, that is raising money for Alzheimer's, suicide, as well as many of the cancer walks, as you guys all know. Our relationship with PTSA, that is where I will bring tonight's WA, WTA report to a close. This has become a staple in our community and we make sure our parents are very much aware of it. Our community is very much aware of it, not just concert apparel, but it has expanded into clothing for the winter, as well as gathering pumpkins and people being at there. I believe this year's event will be from nine thirty to one thirty and we have already started collecting. Our PTSA has this, each of our buildings and it is amazing because we all know, there are things we have gotten our kids, our own children, they wear once, twice, and it's like they grew. And it's so neat to be able to see, to pass it down, let other students have it, let other kids have it. And it's a wonderful event, it will be packed again, it will be four hours and we very much look forward to all our partnership with our PTSA. You guys, wishing you joy and peace and kindness.
Thanks, Joni.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Juliana.
Looks like it's just gonna be me tonight.
No rock, paper, scissors. I mean, you already did that with Joni, but it's good.
That's okay. So this past week, some students at Schrader participated in our Home Skills 101 component of our Life Skills program and they constructed stools for little kids at Clem South who were unable to like easily reach the sinks. And I saw some of the pictures that were going around and they were just overjoyed when all the big kids came to the school, their smiles were like so big, it was super cute. Again, with little kids, Ms. Bailey's Algebra II enriched class, met with Ms. Coase's UPK class. Every year, Ms. Bailey picks one of her classes to meet with the UPK kids monthly to build relationships and to teach them math lessons, which I really would have enjoyed that when I was a little kid, that would have been so cool. Four of our students were recognized by College Board for their exceptional academic performance on the PSAT. Jessica Aff, Megan Aff, Yi Jay, and Catherine S. were in the top fifty thousand nationally for their scores, which is wild, coming from someone who has taken the SAT very recently. Congratulations to them.
That's great.
This month, we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with various activities throughout the month, starting actually tomorrow with a band in the library. And then, like she was saying, we had the Fun Run last week and high school athletes helped out at the Fun Run, giving high fives and encouraging them to cross the finish line strongly despite the little rainy weather that we were having. It was a lot of fun, I attended with some of my softball friends and it was a lot of fun to see all the kids and they really liked having us there. We were running with them and stuff, it was a lot of fun. And then last week, to finish off, we had our Homecoming Week, which was a huge success. We had lots of fun dress up days, we had various activities during our lunches, including snow cones, and, and we had our Homecoming Dance, which we had a big turnout this year, so it was really good. And finishing Friday off with the pep rally leading into the football game that night. So it was really good.
That's great, thanks, Juliana.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
Okay, I think I'm up next with campus news and actually, I've got a few things, but if the four of you don't mind, when moving your way on up to the table here, I'll start talking and go over a couple of things and then I'll be able to turn things over. All right, so first and foremost, I am thrilled to begin my report with a celebration of a group of people making a difference in our community, our Webster CSD Board of Education. Next week, school districts throughout the state celebrate Board of Education Recognition Week. And I want to take a moment to thank our board members for all that they do throughout the year for students, for faculty, for staff, and our one Webster community. I have seen firsthand the countless volunteer hours throughout the year, this special group of people dedicate to the needs of our students, our families, and our staff members. In addition to my appreciation, I would like to share with you a few words from some of our students at Spri and Willink. D'Angelo from Spri Middle School shared, "Our library and cafeteria have both been updated within the last few years. I appreciate that the Board of Education is always trying to improve our buildings and updating things so that they have, that we have the best resources possible." That was fantastic. Avery from Spri adds, "I appreciate that our school district offers us a lot of different activities and opportunities and I think our school district has a welcoming feel." Colin from Willink said, "The board and administration has helped me to find love in after-school programs with all that they are able to provide." Peyton from Willink, one more, says that the board supports our school administrators so that they can provide the flexibility that my peers and I need to learn and do our best." So again, right straight from our kiddos at the middle level. So a sincere, our sincere gratitude goes out to President Janice Richardson, Vice President Linda DiAgadi, and board members Carol Barnabas, Maria Cortez, Michelle Lowe's, and Jeff McCaffrey. How about a huge round of applause for our Board of Education? Much appreciated. And we would celebrate that next week, but we don't have a board meeting next week, we only had one this weekend, so that's why we're doing that. Okay, I got a couple, Paul, that I might just slow, show the slides here too, actually the next one, no, I'm gonna go through. Those of you that might have seen it, we had our area Autumn Fan Fair this past weekend. So what an amazing weekend it was, we had eleven bands come and present. And our marching band, there they are on the screen, has new uniforms this year and oh my God, they are so sharp, they look great, and the energy of our marching band, it's just phenomenal. And the pride of Webster is the name of our marching band and I hope that you had the opportunity to stop out and see some of the festivities at Webster Schrader this past weekend. They performed fantastic, we've got a couple more coming up and they actually have states at the end of the month at the Carrier Dome, or, it's not the Carrier Dome, what's the name of the dome now? JMA, thank you, the JMA Dome in Syracuse. It's the last Sunday of the month of October, they'll compete for states. And thank you to all the student musicians and performers who spend countless hours rehearsing their shows for all of us to enjoy and that begins early in the summer. So it's, it's that marching band season. All right, next, you heard about our Fun Run, a little bit from Juliana. Juliana, thank you so much, Juliana, for doing that, but we also want to say that we're grateful for our dedicated teachers, our staff members, our parents, and student volunteers, the Webster Police Department, and the town of Webster for all of the collaboration that went into making the Fun Run possible. And you can see in that, look at the joy in those kids' faces as they're, they're running away from the starting line. It's such a fantastic thing, just so you know, this was year fifty-eight and it is something that's very special in Webster. So, great event. You also heard from Juliana about our Clem South slash Schrader, TJ Milliman's class, you might see TJ in that class, that's his class and they were making those stools and that was what Juliana was referring to. And what a great connection. I know Mrs., Mrs. N. may even say something about that, I don't know, or if you can, if you want to later on, you can too, but what a great opportunity. No, you weren't planning on it, so I will just continue with, not only did that, they made those for a specific student that had the request of that, that had some limitations, and what a great outreach that was. And now we do have other stools that some of the other students at Clem, at Clem South use. Go ahead.
And one of those students that made the stool is a former Clem South student.
Oh, that's awesome. It's just such a cool connection. It really was. It made everybody feel wonderful about it, but it also, there was a lot of learning going involved in, for making those stools. So, next, I am just going to give a shout out. I want to give one more shout out to a DuWitt Road pre-K teacher, Becky Sensible, who recently received the News Eight Golden Apple Award. Becky exudes positivity while she promotes a safe, respectful, and caring environment for our students to strive, or to thrive. We are so proud of Becky and grateful to, to have her as a Webster CSD teacher. And there's a picture there on the screen with the student and the family that nominated her for it, but I know I can say that when we were over there, what a great day that was. So shout out to Becky. And now, I am gonna turn it over to some special guests. With us today, we have principal from Clem South, we have Martha End, we have our principal from Willink Middle School, Brian Powers, and from our Aquatics Center, we have our co-directors, Ben Whipple and Brian Wilcox, and I'm excited to hear what they have to say. We will turn things over and I'll just kind of keep talking because Paul's getting things ready here, just to kind of turn it over to Martha.
He knows me well, I always need a little assistance in getting it up.
There you go.
All right, good evening, everyone, thank you. I apologize, I have my phone because I went home to see my kids quickly and I left my bag at home, so my notes are on my phone. So, thank you so much for having me here tonight. So it's my turn this month to share the awesome news that is happening in our elementary schools. And, as Brian said, I'm Martha End and I am the principal at Clem South. And up there, you'll see that, that's our logo for the year, actually, it's our theme. So our theme is "Everyone Counts at Clem South." And we chose that theme because it really is centered around our commitment to belonging at the elementary level. So if you come to see our school, you'll see we have shirts and it's all over, it's plastered all over the school. All right, so this evening, we're going to highlight Board Goal Two, which is Climate and Culture. And one of the standout projects that I want to highlight tonight has been developed by a Thomas Junior, and that's called our Bigs and Littles Program, maybe you've heard of it. So here you'll see some pictures of the students from our first gathering. And this was an initiative that was inspired by our high school students who expressed a strong desire to provide some mentorship and some positive role modeling for students in our elementary schools. And it really came to us from the sweet young lady in the center there, that's Tessa Bartlett, so she's a former Clem South student. And she, I think, started thinking about this last year and she brought it to her counselor, Sarah Harrington, who's on the left, and Ben Glenn Whedore reached out to me and said, "Hey, can we make this happen?" And we were able to brainstorm some ideas, but really Tessa is the one that spearheaded everything. And it was really cool last week because it was the first meeting and just to see all of the planning that went into it. She not only planned and got all of the high school kids to come and be part of it, but she also developed a guidance document for the staff at Clem South and helped us with the selection process for the students being mentored in the elementary school. So, we had our first meeting last week, so we have fifteen students selected, so fifteen littles, fifteen bigs. They'll plan to meet monthly, so the older students will drive to Clem South and meet their littles. And I just cannot say enough about the, the students that were selected were, were kids that really needed that positive role model and the excitement that they felt having been chosen to be part of this program, it, it was truly cool, so. All right, and then, another important aspect of our work around the climate and culture goal is strengthening our alignment of our MTSS systems. So, last week, or two weeks ago, I think, some members, Linda and Carol, joined us at Clem South for their walk and we were able to highlight some of the work that we're doing around MTSS. So here you'll see our M-Class Intervention, you may have heard that term M-Class, is what we are using at the elementary level, it's all very new. And we were able to show them, some students, in their very first intervention, this was their first time receiving the intervention with their interventionists. And then we also were able to look at the platform for our benchmarking. So just to give you a sense of how we collect the data, we are continuing to benchmark our students three times a year, we provide daily interventions, and then we progress monitor on an ongoing basis. So this is just kind of a picture of what that dashboard looks like. So we were able to dig into that a little bit, it's all very new, but it was exciting to share that with the board on their visit. And to this, I just want to say thank you all for your support, happy board recognition, is it month or week?
It's week.
Week, oh, we'll celebrate you for a whole.
That's what we do in Webster, we do the whole month. That's great.
So we're really excited about the progress that we're making at the elementary level with all the things we're doing and throughout the year, I know that my colleagues will continue to share the good work that's happening at the elementary level. Thank you.
Brian Powers, principal of Willink Middle School, thank you for giving us the time to highlight some of our secondary things that are going on in the schools. And it's always hard to follow elementary because their slides are beautiful and we have a lot to learn from them. I begged Paul to let me go first, but. So, as much as I would love to go on and on, I just would love to share some of the pictures that have been shared from our secondary programs and buildings and highlight some pieces that, that may be unique. At Spri Middle School, which we see here, among other things, they engaged with urban planners, working with the village local planning committee. And what a great opportunity for Spri and for Webster, among the other great things that they are doing right now and looking forward to seeing what comes from that. At Willink Middle School, and no bias here, but I want to thank our board members, Carol and Linda, who were able to join us for a visit earlier this month. And as a son of a board member, I just want to recognize how, how much time you give to the community, all of you, on top of all the other things you do that people don't always realize. So thank you for making the time to be at Willink, where we were able to meet with some sixth graders and talk about the transition from elementary to middle school and gain some great feedback for things that we could go forward with, as well as Officer Hurley joining us for some cookout and hot sauce competition. If you ever need somebody to help you grill, Officer Hurley is a wonderful person to bring to the table. Some Warrior Pride, many wonderful things going on at Schrader High School. And I just wanted to highlight Bands of America Third Place and First Place in Medina or Medina. So congratulations to our Schrader Warriors. And First Place at Autumn Fan Fair, which we were talking about this morning, what a wonderful thing, not only to take first place, but to do it at your home venue. So, congratulations. At Owl High School, among many other wonderful things, we wanted to highlight that the freshmen new to the Owl High and Thomas High School are beginning to explore many extracurricular opportunities. They're excited to share that there are five students joining clubs so far this year and they, like all of our students at Thomas, are looking forward to Spirit Week and the pep rally, which is coming up, or which is actually here upon us this week with Thomas Homecoming on Thursday. At Owl Middle, housed in Willink, a celebration of a new scheduling intervention called What I Need to dedicate progress on Goal One. And you can see some of the academic growth activities going on there that are traditional and non-traditional. At Goal, we want to highlight the field trip to the YMCA's Camp Arrowhead. And on September sixteenth, the freshman class made a southern breakfast for everyone and they were introduced to some new tastes and spices and had a wonderful time with And finally, at Thomas High School, as Martha mentioned, the Big Little Program at Clem South, so we are both at the secondary and elementary level, excited to highlight that. And along with Owl High School, yesterday began the legendary Thomas Homecoming Celebration and we look forward to all the events that will continue until Thursday night with the Homecoming Game, food trucks, et cetera. So again, thank you to the board for the time you give to our community and the time you give us to highlight some of the many things that are going on in our schools.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Wonderful. All right, we will now turn it over to Brian. And actually, I'll just add that whole, the one that Brian was highlighting from Spri with the urban planning, such a cool event where Aaron actually sits on the committee for the village. And the village, when the village was awarded back in February, the four point five million dollars from the governor's office, well, they have to determine what they're going to do with that money. And so what they did is they brought the, they brought the plans and some of the things that they are actually open to bidding on, so to speak, to the kids. And the kids voted on things and they gave input to the planners and whatnot that then they could take back to the committee. And the kids voted on things and they gave input to the planners and whatnot that then they could take back to the committee. It was very insightful. There was such insightful feedback. It was great. So, yeah, it was neat. Yeah, it was very similar to the Capitol Project when we went through the library situation several years ago. So, sorry, I digress. I will turn it now over to our exciting Webster Aquatic Center.
I'm going to cut you off.
Thank you, Ben.
I'm Ben Whipple, one of the aquatic directors at the Aquatic Center.
And I'm Brian Wilcox.
And it's kind of nice. Usually, we go at the end of the year and all of our events have really gone through in the calendar year, but it's nice at the beginning of the year to share what's going on in the Aquatic Center. So before COVID, we had a second grade to fifth grade swim program that was over there. It was running smoothly. And it took a few years now to finally get it up and going back again. So we have a majority of our elementary schools coming and getting back in the water. We have our middle schoolers and our high schoolers now. You know, everybody's more comfortable with the busing, with the time change and everything. So everything's going a little bit smoother. We're going to try and extend it back to our second graders, probably next year, not this year. But one highlight from last year is we took the UPK program from Thomas. And we just had them come in for a brief half hour over at Thomas, just to get them, you know, in the water. And it was, you know, separated. There was only 10 at one time, and we had, you know, four or five people in the water with them, just to get them, you know, a little water safety, which is great. Youngest age, you can get them in the water. They'll benefit from that. So it's nice to see our calendar for the PE classes back to normal. It's great.
In June, we actually had our youth triathlon. It's like the year 15 or 16, something like that, kindergarten on up. So the kids come. It's all for fun. There's no, we're not, you know, handing out ribbons or places. We do give medals to each kid, and at the end, they have snow cones and popcorn. It's just a good community outreach program for us.
Our summer programs, where we have our swim lessons throughout the summer, we had 377 registered over the summer, and that is actually including the fall right now. So our swim program is fantastic. It's staying strong. And it's almost limited by the amount of instructors we can get. We keep adding classes where we can just to make sure that everybody in the community gets an opportunity to get in the water because they fill up like that. But we just keep trying to find ways to get everybody in the water.
This next one is our Carol Cuomo Appreciation Post. She's been with the district since the pool opened back in 2001, teaching water-sized aerobics classes. A few years ago, right around COVID-ish, her and her husband decided to move to Florida and retire. And one of the patrons kind of joked and said, oh, you should Zoom them because Zoom is kind of new to everybody at the time. And we're like, that's actually not a bad idea because it's hard to find good instructors. And she's kept her following, and her classes are usually pretty packed. And she was actually home visiting family for the month up in Rochester. So she taught a couple of classes this month in person up on the top right. And the ladies love her so much, they had a little lunch going away party for her last week. So that's her picture up with the TV, with the Google Meet that we use.
That's cool.
A couple of new things that we have coming up this year. We've had the Girls State Meet at our facility for the past two years. This year will be our third, so that'll be the conclusion of this bid. But we were awarded the 25 through 27 award, so the next three years after that, we'll have Girls States at the Aquatic Center, which is a big thing for the town and our school. And we were reached out in March. We have the YMCA Championships here as well. Usually, we have a lot of USA teams that come. It's nice to have another program come through. And I guess it's really well-attended, so it'll be quite an event for Webster.
That's awesome.
So we were just here in May. So our numbers haven't changed a whole lot year-to-date, but they changed just a little bit. But again, the biggest thing is that bottom number, about 90,000 people have come through the pool year-to-date. Just at the Aquatic Center, doesn't even include the Thomas Pool with the lessons and all that kind of stuff. And then, real quick, when we were here in May, this literally happened the night before. One of our staff, he was trained at the Aquatic Center. He's a lifeguard at the Aquatic Center. He was just doing yard work in his yard, and his neighbor was walking, and he collapsed. And Wes went right over, performed CPR, and saved the guy. So we have, and he was just honored by the Wes Webster Fire Department like a week or so ago. So I just wanted to reiterate because literally last time we were here, we just found out that day. So we didn't really have a picture ready or anything like that. So we just wanted to make sure he got recognized.
All right. Well, thank you guys very, very much. I'll just conclude by saying, first of all, thank you for a great presentation. Thank you for your leadership. And Board of Education, again, thank you guys very, very much for your leadership and your dedication and your time. So, and that concludes our report. Thank you, everyone. We ready to go to the next? Okay. The next one, excited? Yes, our English representatives, please come on up. I'll turn things over to Erin to have her give us just a little quick, brief update before we turn things over to our presenters.
We are excited to hear from Dr. Larry Wall tonight, who's brought some friends with him. I'll let him introduce his friends who've come to talk to us about our ELA program. So just from sort of the last number of years, we spent a lot of time talking about elementary literacy and really the foundational supports that we have updated, changed. And you heard Martha talk about that a little bit tonight as well. But we really want to give you a peek into secondary tonight and what that might look like for our program and our students and what courses we offer. So with that, Larry, take it away. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Erin. And it really is a pleasure to be able to share a little bit about this department, which is very near and dear to my heart. And I was thinking, as Joan Bardanas was talking about, that we have more than 800 WTA members. I'm really privileged to be able to share the table tonight with four of our finest. And I think that you'll find that their stories are representative of the unbelievable staff that we have in all of our buildings. So before we get to that, though, I just want to sort of give you some navigational tools to get an overall sense of what the secondary English department is like. Take a look at what's on the screen. Does that look familiar to you? It's not a test you don't have to answer.
I think it does, Larry.
There you go. It just happens to be one of our essential skills, communication. And you'll notice that there's something else that talks along a similar line. Does that look familiar? It's one of our core beliefs. And if we move forward and we look at the words that I've circled in our mission and our vision, you can think about that word "communication," and I hope you understand how important it is. To be a community, we affirm our membership in the community by communicating with each other. We are connected through communication. We are engaged by communicating, and we certainly learn through that as well. All of this works together with our main purpose, which is to help our students find their voice and know how to use it well. So tonight, we're going to take a look at our department's role in helping our students do that. Just a couple of things from the state. This is what we get in terms of guidance. The state guides us through these standards, and there are 28 of them, with four strands: reading, writing, listening and speaking, and language. And then to go along with those, which are defined by grade level or grade level groups at the high school, there are these lifelong practices, which the state has identified. And you can imagine what those might be. For instance, regularly reading, being comfortable writing in all kinds of different forms. And then the third piece is to look at what it means for text complexity. How do we choose texts? And it's not just looking at the lexile, for example, of a text. It's saying, well, what is the context that this student brings to this content? And if a student knows a lot about it, they might be reading at a much higher level than their simple lexile says. Or if they don't know a lot about it, we might need to provide. So those are the three things that the state gives us in terms of how we form our curriculum. And here's just something that's been revised several different times. I just wanted to let you know. In spring of 2023, we took the first iteration of the new version of the 3-8 tests. And really, it was not a big deal because we moved from Common Core ELA standards to Next Gen ELA standards. And they're pretty much the same. They're just easier to use. And so if you look at the far corner of the screen, you'll see that our high school ELA Regents exam is set to be new in June of 2026. But I wanted to reassure you, and Linda Law, one of our teachers at Schrader, helped me to reassure you by saying that it's really not going to change that much. The format is going to stay pretty much the same. And in fact, it's still going to be a pen and paper test in 2026. I think that we may see the 3-8 tests. We've already seen the 3-8 test moved to digital. And we were hopeful that the Regents exams would do that as well. But at least as of June, when Linda talked with the Office of State Assessment, they said, nope, we're staying with pencil and paper. So I just wanted you to have that. How do we do? You know, other disciplines have several different tests. If you think about math, if you think about science, ELA has one test. It is the comprehensive exam in English, and it's given in junior year, typically at the end of junior year. This is the test that we perform on the best. And you can see here that 92% of our students are proficient. That's a 3, 4, or 5 on the test. And 51% show mastery, and that is a 5. So typically, that equates to around an 85 or above. Just to show you, if you take a look at the colors from left to right, the blue and the green on the left, that's a 1 or a 2. And then the yellow, the red, and the violet, that's a 3, 4, and 5. Together, they are proficient. And then the violet is our percentage of students who are masters in this content. 2020, of course, we didn't take the test. 2021, there were very few students who chose to take it. But the numbers below and the numbers above are pretty representative, and you can see that most of our students do pretty well. And we have multiple opportunities for the students who need them to take the test again. So in middle school, we are really lucky in Webster to be able to double-dip with English skills in sixth and seventh grade. We have a gen ed course called Literacy. And it's been wonderful over the years to work with both departments as they try to divvy it up. And it continues to evolve. The one thing that I'll tell you is that there tends to be more of a bias toward nonfiction and reading in the literacy gen ed classes, which are in sixth and seventh grade. And in the ELA classes in sixth and seventh grade, there tends to be more of a bias toward fiction and writing. But of course, they work on all standards as appropriate with their kids. And then from a remedial standpoint, we have a number of options for the literacy portion from grade six through eight. We have a skills class in grade eight for ELA skills. And then we have a writing lab, which is in its second year. And this was really teacher-driven. They saw that there were some needs in terms of reinforcing basic writing skills. And the thing that I like about it the most is that students are identified early in the first marking period, and the goal is to move them out as quickly as possible. So it's packaged in 10-week portions, and it really is designed to be targeted instruction for particular weaknesses. And hopefully, the kids will be able to get that done and move back. So. Sure. This is during school. Yep. What you see in the chart is our, that's right from the course catalog. You can see we've got a couple of options for ninth and 10th grade. 11th grade, it opens up a little more. 12th grade, it opens up a lot. Then there are elective courses. And just to share with you, again, we're very lucky that we're in our third year of having a full-time literacy teacher at both high schools. And what that does is that opens up accessibility, and it opens up options for the literacy teachers to provide just a range of opportunities for both teachers and students. So now I get to introduce these folks. Down at the end, we've got Kate Randisi. Next to her is Meredith Kulik. Both of them are eighth-grade teachers at Willink. And then, woo-hoo. We've got Danny Bemis and Eileen Connolly, both from Schrader. And, you know, we have 40 English teachers and 21 reading and literacy teachers at the secondary level, so that's 61 people. And I'm super happy that we've got these four because I think that their stories will show you what kind of a range our teachers bring to their students. Kate taught at PellMac in special ed from grades three through eight for 10 years and came to us in 2019 to be a part of the Owl program at Middle School. Was there for a couple of years and then transitioned to the ELA position. This is her second year in the position. Meredith taught at Wayne Central School for 10 years as well. And in 2006, decided to stay home with her kids. And when she decided, a few years later, to come back to us, which was 2021, right? She was a high school English teacher at Wayne and came back to teach eighth grade. And so she's in her third year here, fourth year here. Next to her is Danny Bemis, and Danny is a graduate. And in fact, Brian and I were talking. Did you graduate from Webster High School or Webster-Schrader High School?
It was the class that split us from Schrader.
That's what I predicted.
In 2004. And in fact, didn't think she would be a teacher and majored in film studies instead and headed out to Hollywood, where she did pretty okay. In fact, I have to do this correctly. She received an Emmy nomination in 2016 for Outstanding Supporting Visual Effects, The Walking Dead, No Way Out. That is a true story.
I think it was her high school librarian that.
I think it must have been. She made her way out, though, and returned to Webster. That's right.
I'm just kidding. Mrs. Land was, of course.
And she returned to Webster as a long-term sub and was sort of a jack-of-all-substitutability for four years.
This is my eighth, seventh year here?
So for a long time. And while she was doing that, she got her master's and dual certification in special ed and English and joined us officially in 20...
What's official?
Let's see. 2021. Yep.
Officially.
Officially. And currently teaches AP Language and Ninth Grade Enriched. And then right next to me here is Eileen Connolly. Eileen has been here since?
1996.
1995. And taught 10 years at Aquinas before coming here. And currently teaches 10th grade, 10th grade enriched, and continues her long tenure as the Speech and Debate Assistant Coach.
She taught me how to be the librarian.
She taught me how to be an English teacher. I still remember because we both.
She taught me how to use a computer, though.
So it all worked out, right? So I really, I just have a few questions for these folks. And then when we get to the Q and A portion, you'll have a chance to answer questions as well. But I guess the first question that I hope you're wondering about is, for any of you really, what happened today in class?
We started a novel, The Giver. One of the kids' favorites, I think. They always seem to enjoy it. I love teaching it. So a lot of questions about the giver community. I don't know if anybody has read that recently, but a lot of differences, a utopian society. So it's going to be fun, but we started that today.
Okay. How about up at high school?
It's interesting. My students were actually in seminar today, so they were actively working on finding their voices. And then my surprise 90 children, they're very cutely reading their library books and making connections across all of their little independent reads. So it was nice to hear the AP students really work to develop their ability to engage each other in discussion and elevate and bring other people into the discussion. I love that moment where they sink into listening and then can help others into the conversation.
That's awesome. And I have to highlight just very briefly what Erin said about my surprised children. One of our teachers is out for the next few, perhaps, weeks, maybe months. And we did not confirm this until the beginning of the school year, and we didn't have, we couldn't find a sub. And so five of her colleagues said, I'll take one of those classes. And that has happened in other places as well. You know, that's just another way that we have a great faculty. Were you going to say something?
Today, in my classes, two classes were still in short stories, and they were working on 55-word stories. So they're always like, that's the end of the story. I'm like, yes, that's the end of the story. It's only 55 words. So they were working on their basic skills, but they were doing it with these short stories. My 10 enrich kids are on maybe their second or third day of doing public forum debates. So I heard three debates today. I heard one on why cell phones should be allowed in classes, why we should use nuclear energy, and why we should use animals in medical testing. So the kids work in teams of two, and there are two kids who are pro and two kids who are con. And they, really, it's essentially almost the whole 51 minutes. They give speeches. They cross-examine each other. They do rebuttal. They give speeches, they cross-examine each other, they do rebuttal and summary. And those kids finished reading Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde. So ostensibly, their topics are connected to science. So, but they were very, very interesting. And two classes had, this was their second day of debate, but the last class, seventh block, it was their first day. And Danny came in and was like, it's really hot in this room. I said, that's because the energy. Twenty-seven kids, oh my gosh, this is so scary. But that's a really wonderful assignment, and it does prepare them in terms of persuasive writing and speaking. But the good thing is, the kids who are debating are practicing that skill. The other kids are evaluating them. So they're sitting there, listening again and again to the structure of persuasive speech. So that's really helpful to them.
That's awesome. So I have one question for each of them. And I'm gonna start with Kate. And I'm thinking you spent a long time in the special ed world, and you've moved over to the gen ed classroom. And I'm curious how that experience has impacted what you're able to do with your students through planning and just the way the classroom works.
I think the biggest piece is this idea of options for kids and like knowing that not the way I would maybe want to teach it is gonna reach them. So through all of the different years and the different settings and the different grades, kind of knowing where they're coming from is also really helpful, too. And then just being able to pivot pretty quickly, scaffolding all of the things, and then reeling it back in as they show that they can do it. Working with the ICT teachers that I work with are great, and we work really well together. I work with a ENL teacher as well. So just being used to collaborating pretty much all the time, thinking about what kids need and what options, while also keeping them as part of the class as possible and keeping moving forward.
We're super lucky to have you.
Thanks.
Meredith, it was almost twenty years between leaving high school and coming to middle school. Fifteen years.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of what it was.
Close-ish. Close enough for English teachers, right?
I'm like, oh my gosh, it's been that long.
I'm just curious, what has been the bigger difference? Moving from high school to middle school or moving forward a generation?
Yeah. I'm a Webster resident, so my kids were in Webster schools during the time that I was out. So I feel like I was still connected to the district a lot. So it wasn't, I didn't feel like I completely left teaching. I was in their schools, in their classrooms. So I would definitely say it was a bigger adjustment going from high school to middle school. But it was something I wanted to do. If you had asked me when I was a high school teacher if I would have wanted to go down, I probably would have said no. But in that time, I had my own kids. I had my kids go through middle school. I remember precisely the day that I went into Kelly Hill's classroom. And my son, my oldest son, Jackson, was her student at the time. And I just said, if I go back to teaching, I wanna go here. I wanna go literally down the hallway. And that's what we manifested. We like to say that we manifested that to happen. And I am blessed to be there. I think middle school is amazing for that energy. Like, the energy that they bring brings out the energy in me. I think it's great to meet them at that time of their life. I feel like they still kind of want that connection with us. And I feel lucky to be able to be that for them. One of the things about middle school I love is the team aspect, the PLC aspect. I feel super lucky to work with Kate and collaborate with my Blue Eight team. I think that really benefits our kids, that we can connect, we can collaborate, we can share so much together as professionals, and then our kids benefit from that. So I'm really happy that I've been able to come back at the middle school level. And yeah, thank you for having me.
Thanks, Meredith. How about Eileen? Over the last couple of years, one thing that has been so energizing to me has, is the partnership that she's had with her integrated co-taught special ed teacher, Mary Simon, and the partnership that she's had with a brand-new teacher to Webster, Katie Sullivan, as her mentor. And so I'm just interested if you could reflect on those partnerships and what they've been for you.
Mary and I, I think, have been working for four or five years together. We've kind of lost count. We have worked together for long enough that we can finish each other's sentences, as you know, that sometimes happens. But Mary has a degree in English, and she has a lot of knowledge of English. So she is fully a co-teacher. She can grade all of the paragraphs. She doesn't always do that, but it's not really split. We share everything. And we are very fortunate this year to have a little bit smaller classes that adhere to the model of an ICT class a little better. So we're really able to help those students and support them. But she and I just, we, you know, we have the same sense of humor. We like the same things. We, you know, we have complementary skills, I guess you could say. You know, she has some things that I don't have, and she's very, very supportive of me and our students. Katie is not a brand-new teacher. She was at Mount Morris for maybe two years, but it's been wonderful to work with her. She is a wonderful example of a young person who has an exceptionally strong work ethic. So she works really hard. And it's always good to have a young person who, as Meredith pointed out, energizes you. So Katie's questions make me think about the things that I want to revisit. And nobody really ever teaches you how to teach writing. Carol can attest to that. You just kind of learn, you know, Henry Dombrowski comes in, and you pick up a couple of things, and somebody says this. So to be able to bounce ideas off of someone who's relatively recently been in a graduate program in literacy has really been wonderful. And as I say, she would have been here tonight, but she is one of the people who's taken on an extra class. And it is a lot. I mean, especially when you're talking about grading. If you're already, if you already have a hundred and twenty-five students and you're grading those, and then you add another twenty-five, it's a lot. But she's been very cooperative, as has everyone in the department. It's really great that what people have stepped up, Danny has.
And I really see that as good mentorship that Katie said thanks, but no thanks, because I have papers to grade for tonight. So thank you, Eileen, for that, for sure.
Well, I've been, it's okay to say no. It's okay to say no, you know? Because that's something we do have to teach really super responsible young people who want to do their best job. Sometimes you have to learn that.
For sure.
That's a healthy choice to make.
And finally, Danny. How did you get from The Walking Dead?
To The Walking Dead.
To The Really Awake at Schrader. And I'm just curious, in terms of what kind of sharing you've been able to do with your previous experiences in film and what that's brought to your students?
When the kids ask me this question, I like avoid it. How did I get from The Walking Dead? I was The Walking Dead, and I needed a break. So I took a break. And somehow, these people, who weren't part of it, asked me if I wanted to come teach. And I said, I need to ask, you need to ask an adult that question. So that adult was Paul Benz. And Paul, combined with the kids, really drew me in. I needed, I needed a little bit more fulfillment and goodness in my life. And they really, they really do give you that. As far as my experiences, I don't know, we do some quirky things. Like, I really love to show them that writing is more than just writing on a piece of paper. It's part of creation. I've witnessed them make some pretty incredible things. They challenge me to try to figure out, how do I teach kids how to make podcasts or visualize a response to something? Because the world that they live in is very much integrated. And I hope that they leave feeling stronger, having done some of that work. And I also think Karen Spella secretly brought me here to replace her, so. As she retired. Happily retired.
But before she left.
Before she left, yes.
So I'm, again, so thankful that you were able to join us tonight and share a little bit of your experiences. And I hope that you all recognize this is just a representation of the unbelievable faculty that we have, who show up every single day and give our students their very best. And just looking ahead, you know, you've learned quite a bit about the literacy effort at elementary. And as a secondary group, we are thinking, okay, what, how can we accept that baton and really pay attention to what we've learned recently through the science of reading and translate that into practical skills building with our secondary students? As always, and I think that this will always remain here, we want to build more experiences in listening and speaking in a formalized way, in an assessed way, because we tend to focus on reading and writing, unless it's connected to speech and debate. So I was really glad to hear about the two different things that were happening today. And then, as always, you know, we want to use stories that speak to all of our students. We want to continually work with new titles. We want to discover things that help students understand their world and help students find their voices. So thanks again tonight, and congratulations for National School Board's Week. We're gonna call it the month. But it really is true, and I hope you don't mind it being repeated. You know, this is a huge commitment that you make, and it's really important, and it allows all of us to do the work that we're able to do. So thank you all. How about some questions?
I don't really have a question. You know, I have a partiality to the English department. I am so impressed at the way everybody adapts to all the changes that are taking place in language and AI and all of the things that are happening. So I congratulate you. You make me coming to this board very meaningful. Also, Martha and Brian visiting their schools. So is, I know I speak for members of the board. I feel like you presented everything I wanted to hear. I don't even have a question. I might later.
Well, thanks again, everybody.
Oh, wait, I have one more comment. I always like to say, I have to say something. I know, of course. First of all, I love the format. What a great format. That was something, leave it to the English department to come up with a way to tell the story in a whole other way. So all of you together, they'll make it happen. And Larry, what a great format. And then I was always focused, I was kind of focusing on Meredith when you were talking about the giver and the utopian society. Maybe it's Webster. Maybe that's the community that you were really describing there. Because you guys just presented something that did, it was like what Carol said, such a great example of what is happening on a daily basis in our schools. And this is the good stuff that we do want our community to continue to hear. So my hats off to all of you. Thank you for the work you guys do. And Danny, you said it earlier, sinking into listening is such a critical skill for our society right now. And I hope that anybody that's listening, heard you say that, and continues to hear that, the more we listen, the better off we're gonna be as a society. So thank you guys very, very much. It was wonderful, wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
With that, can I have a motion to approve the instructional report as presented? So moved, Carol, second, Maria, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. As we move on to board business, though, I will just point out, I'm nodding my head as you're talking about middle school because it really truly is, yeah, it speaks to me greatly. It is, it is, high school is great, too, but there's a special place for middle school teachers, for sure. So thank you, yes. All right. What do we have first? Treasurer's report, is that right?
Yeah. Treasurer's report is for the month of July. Just want to point out one item, is just a comparison between this July and last July. We're actually doing very well with cash flow. And so we have eight different investments at this time compared to last year. So significant improvement, driving some more interest earnings for the district. And then it probably doesn't make sense, because we're doing the July treasurer's report, but you see a three-month budget status report. So the auditors remind us of the requirement to do quarterly budget status reports on the revenue side that are a little bit more specific and on the budgetary side. So that is actually for three months. So it doesn't, if you're trying to match it up to the treasurer's report, they don't go together. I just wanted to point that out as well. Any questions?
All right, with that, motion to approve the July 2024 treasurer's report as presented. So moved, Jeff, second. Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that all you have tonight? Wow.
Wow, we'd like to hear from you.
It just seems so.
We do.
I know. Carol's like, wait a minute.
Don't worry, October will be different.
Yeah.
This is October, November, you mean?
Oh my god, November.
November will be different. Yes, it could be. And December could be even more.
Yes.
I thought you would just talk more.
I told him not to. I shortened him up. That brings us to.
EV buses.
Yeah, no, same, moving on. Subject B, proposed NISBA resolution. So that's me. I will be representing us at Thursday's meeting. So hopefully, everyone's had a chance to look at the resolutions. I don't know if there's any questions, comments, concerns. Go for it.
Well, I, no, I just asked the question earlier today. I went through those things. And I was, they were spot-on with, you know, like, I had to look against and for, like, check that. But it was just a spot-on thing, and I agree with all of it. It was a lot, though.
I think if you read, Janice and I were talking about it, if you read the rationale that NISBA gives for each of them, why they're saying move them forward or not move them forward, it helps break it, break it down into clear, concise language, so.
Yeah. Sounds good. Okay, so, yep, I will do that on Thursday. So with that, motion to approve the NISBA resolutions. So moved, second, Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to board member highlights. We've had a lot of highlights on many things this evening. So if anyone has anything else they want to add? Any events they've been to, PTSA meetings, anything?
Just that, again, that we.
I know, we got a lot.
Had the opportunity to visit the schools. And I loved seeing the beginning of the reading program. But at Willink, we saw this, we met with the students. And that was so impressive. I can't believe how much they had to say. And great questions.
I'm sure.
But it inspires me to do the work we do, and it also makes me so hopeful about the future. There's so many things out there to lose your hope over. But what everybody is doing, it actually makes me emotional. I'm so proud of our schools, so. Thank you.
Yes, it was awesome. Anybody else?
I know, I forgot a little.
Oh, I know, it was amazing.
No, it's great, yeah.
It was great. I just have a couple updates. District operations, we had an opportunity, Monroe County School Boards, to hear Grease present on the cell phones. It was, it was a really powerful presentation. They went through the policies, the strategies that they used, the overview of it. It's not a hundred percent perfect. It's a work in progress, but it's going really well. So it was great to hear their honest feedback. For Monroe County Legislative Committee, they are continuing to work on the position papers. A big focus is foundation aid, the formula, and zero emission buses. So there'll be more on that. And it's wonderful that our, the Monroe County Schools Boards Association continues to meet with our legislators on a regular basis and building those relationships. So they're really working hard on that. As far as PTSAs, Schlegel, Plank South, Clem South, they all have trunk or treats. It's crazy. I mean, they're all, they have a ton of events. They have so much going on and a lot of fundraisers, so it's very exciting. Spry has new leadership, so there's a ton of energy there. And Schrader has Stacy, and she's just amazing. So she's got a lot going on there. I won't repeat any of that. Webster Health and Education Network has a, they're collaborating with the district on the sixteenth of October. And the Family Forum is social media and your kids. It'll be the first of a three-part series that will be over the course of the school year. So look for that. It'll be in this building at 6:30. They'll also have a Fall Drug Takeback on October 26th from 10:00 to 2:00. And I'd like to extend my congratulations to them because they were the recipient of a federal grant for, to continue the work that they are doing for the next five years. So it is a pretty amazing thing. It was a very long process, so very proud of them. And finally, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Chawell for last night's family engagement. That was awesome. It really was amazing. I thought it was great conversations. Thank you for the work that you do and for everybody that came. It was, it was really powerful, so. And I think people left feeling empowered. And I think people left feeling empowered and that, that sense of community, we're really doing a good job on it. So thank you. Thank you. And that's all I have. All right. The only other thing I will mention is that next week's workshop is postponed. We're going to be combining it with November's workshop, which we've decided will be on November 13th. We're going to check out the esports and some other things. So we're going to combine those. So next week, we won't have a meeting. We're going to push it to November so we can see a bunch of things all at the same time. Okay?
Yep.
Right?
The other topic is secondary activities and clubs.
That's what I thought.
That's the one we're combining that with. We'll do it all at Thomas and we'll see everything in action. It'll be good.
Awesome. All right, so that's done. That moves consent agenda to the table. So if I could have someone move consent agenda for the approval? So moved Linda, second. Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I see consent agenda. That moves us to public speaking time. Do we have any public speakers to give my spiel? I'll go through the spiel quick and then you can announce the name. The board offers up to three to five minutes for public speaking. It is a time for the board to listen. It's not a dialogue. It's not a public forum, but we're happy to listen for up to three to four minutes if anyone wants to address the board. Sign up was by noon today and I believe we have a name?
Mr. Rowland.
Don't believe he's here. So, all right.